The meeting of the Tiverton School Committee. If everyone could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If everyone could please remain standing for a moment. For those who may or may not know, Mr. Louis Bittar passed away last week at the age of eighty-five. Mr. Bittar was a highly respected member of the Tiverton community, and he worked for the Tiverton School Department for thirty-five years from nineteen sixty-two to nineteen ninety-seven. Ultimately, he began his career as a teacher. He held several positions through the years, and ultimately, he retired as superintendent in nineteen ninety-seven. Mr. Bittar was also one of the driving forces behind the construction of the Tiverton Middle School. Mr. Bittar leaves behind his wife Emily, his four daughters, including Kristen Destrems and Merrill Montero, both of whom are district employees, along with many more family members and friends. So, please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Bittar. Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin our meeting this evening with a short presentation and a school committee tour of our new and updated CTE learning spaces. I don't anticipate that tour to go any more than ten to fifteen minutes. Everyone is welcome to join. Ms. Cusmano, are you here?
Oopsie. Hello. I'd like to bring you on two tours. Very quickly, be outside our greenhouse. I did have lights set up outside, however, because it's raining, it's electrical, I haven't really tested it out. I didn't feel like making a fire. So, if I'm on the way out, I have a flashlight. If you want to come out, also put your flashlight in your phone. I can give you a tour of our greenhouse. And then after that, we're going to go upstairs and look at the CTE science grant that we've won for our chemistry classrooms. Thank you.
Okay, let's go. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Lee Cusmano for giving us that tour. For those of you who were able to join us, you got to see the new greenhouse. That's aligned with the CTE program, as well as some of the grant-purchased items that she's got in her classroom. I think they're all great gets, and I do want to thank her for her dedication to Tiverton Schools. So, now we'll move to open forum. I have first up this evening, Abigail Hilliard. I'll get it. Good evening. Is your microphone up?
I see red. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sounds like it. Ready to start?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Abigail Hilliard, and I live at eight-nine-two Brayton Road. I'm here tonight to ask for your intervention into special education in our district. My daughter has not had a special education teacher for a year and a half. The district has not been in compliance for following her individualized education program.
Ms. Hilliard, I'm going to have to stop you. We really cannot discuss specific children.
Sure. I'll talk about more.
As part of open forum.
So, I have several instances where I've experienced and spoken to other parents where IEPs are not being followed for at least eight months. Multiple parents being, expressing that they're not getting responses to their requests, myself included. So many things have gone on over the last couple of years that it appears there's either negligence or discrimination, but I'd love to talk to you offline. So, for the last two months, the district has reported that we are fully staffed to meet the needs of all children with IEPs. I can attest to you, that is not true. And so, I'm asking you all to hold the district accountable for data that's presented and what's actually happening with our most vulnerable population, children with special needs. As I mentioned, I've spoken to other parents who are worried about coming forward for fear of retaliation of what happens when you advocate for your child, but something really needs to be done. It's been going on for too long. I'll follow up with a formal agenda request, but I request that you obtain an independent audit of our special education program. We deserve to know what our students are receiving, what's being met and not met in IEPs, and we deserve regular updates of what's being done to meet the needs of our children. This is the third year that Tiverton has had its own special education program. Excuse me. And at least for my kiddo, it's gotten worse each year. We don't have a dedicated special education director to ensure that the needs of our three-hundred-and-fifty students on IEPs are being met, let alone those with five-oh-four plans, and I think that speaks volumes of the district's view of their obligation to our children with special needs. As the needs of our students continue to not be met, the cost of out-of-district placements and busing will continue to rise, possibly crippling the town. As distrust grows from needs being unmet and advocacy from parents not being listened to, the number of homeschooled students will rise, and state and federal funding will decline based on enrollment. Special education is a problem now, but it could easily become a crisis. I beg of you to step in and ensure our special education system challenges and supports all students to learn and develop, and provides our district educators and related service providers with the staffing and training they need to support our students appropriately. Teachers, my kid needs you, if you know of anybody. She's the best kid you'll ever meet. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Shannon McNamara.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shannon, and I live at sixty-five East Mellow Drive, and I'm also the parent of two Ranger children. I just wanted to come tonight so I could share a few wonderful words about, and they're actually kind of from my kids, about the incredible support professionals in their classroom. I'm only going to use initials tonight, and they're both Mrs. B. So, my son wanted me to let her know that Mrs. B. is very nice, and she helps with anything. If the work is too hard, she helps, and sometimes she even sits with me at lunch, and she always helps me to follow instructions. From my daughter, she said Mrs. B. helps correct papers, she helps with calls, and importantly, she helps keep the classroom in line. So, these are some small examples, but they show what I see every day. Our teaching assistants go above and beyond. I've seen them attend C-LAG meetings on their own time to better support students, help at pickup during the most chaotic part of the day, and they are known to bring in special items like periodic table flashcards to make a child feel seen and excited to learn. They remember our kiddos even after they leave their classrooms with hugs and kind words in the hallway. These are the people who keep our schools running smoothly. They are the heart of our classrooms and the backbone of our community. The TAs, custodians, and clerks are an integral part of the system that provides invaluable support in all aspects of running a school system. I'm asking that we, as a community, show them our support by showing up, by wearing our green, and by reminding everyone that our ESPs are essential. They show up for our kids every day, and it's time that we show up for them. And while I have everyone's attention, I just wanted to make a quick plug that local food banks are facing record demand, and with SNAP benefits potentially ending on November first, even more families may need help. So, if you can, a small donation can make an immediate difference to keep those shelves stocked and ensure that nobody in our community goes hungry this winter. And a reminder, please come to the C-LAG workshop on the nineteenth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, and then lastly, Mr. Perry.
Dave Perry, Seventy-Eight Bramble Way, for those of you who don't know me. I misspoke two meetings ago, and I'm here to apologize. I said that the schools received sixty-five percent of the casino money. I was wrong. Must have been the Peter coming out in me. I would like to go over what actually everyone got in the town for casino money. Total casino money was eleven million, one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. The assessor got, so far, twenty thousand, eighteen percent. Tax collector, eighty thousand, point seven-two percent. Clerk, forty-five thousand, four-forty percent, point four-zero percent. Council, one-point, one-million-three-hundred, one-point, one-million-one-hundred-ninety-eight-thousand, two-oh-four, for ten-point-seven-eight. DPW, ninety-hundred-seventy-six-thousand, eight-point-seven-eight. DPW Recycling, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, five-point-eight-five. Fire Department, eight-hundred-ninety-three-thousand, two-twenty-eight, eight-point-oh-three percent. Fort Baden Park, fifteen-thousand, point-one-three percent. Library, forty-seven-thousand, point-four-two percent. Planning Board, seventy-one-thousand, seven-fifteen, point-six-five percent. Cemetery, Pecassett Cemetery, seventy-seven-thousand-five-hundred, point-seven-oh percent. Police, five-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, four-point-six-one percent. Recreation, one-hundred-thousand, point-nine-oh percent. Schools, five-million-three-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand, six-hundred-and-one. That's forty-eight-point-three, plus the one-point-two-million-dollar bailout from last year, equals fifty-nine-point-five. So, I know someone complained about getting twenty-seven percent this year. You've gotten over fifty-nine percent. Senior Center, ninety-three-thousand, five-point-eight-four percent, and Town Hall, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-seventy, for five-point-oh-three percent. That's not counting what the local appropriations have been. Two-thousand-twenty-two, twenty-five-thousand-six-hundred-eleven, three-point-eight-nine percent. Twenty-twenty-three, twenty-six-thousand-five-forty-seven, three-point-six-five percent. Twenty-twenty-four, twenty-seven-thousand-three-forty-three, three percent. Twenty, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-eight-thousand-two-fifty-one, for three-point-three-two percent. And then twenty-twenty-six, twenty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-forty, for three-point-five-oh percent. It's a million-dollar increase since twenty-two. You can shut your timer off. So, I'd just like to make that my correction, and as far as you telling us how to run our end of the business, you ought to pay more attention to running your own end of the business. You're the one running a deficit of one-point-two percent.
Thank you. Okay, moving on with our agenda. We have on our consent agenda this evening, school committee minutes from October fifteenth, as well as executive session minutes from October fifteenth. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Second. And all those in favor? Oh, excuse me. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. The Pecassett Blue Ribbon Ribbon, Blue Ribbon School?
Yes.
It says that they got a National Blue Ribbon Award, but it should specify that it was for exemplary achievement, for a gap-closing school, because it kind of looks like that was, it's a blue-ribbon school.
It is a blue-ribbon school.
But it got a blue ribbon for...
A blue ribbon is a blue ribbon, regardless of the reasoning for them receiving it.
I think it's a little different, because like, your blue-ribbon school is...
Okay, Ms. Pocket, I'll have them change the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous, thank you. We don't have our clerk with us here this evening, so it might take me a little bit of time. I just want to make sure I'm noting the votes. Okay, chairperson's remarks. Introduction to new standing agenda item. You'll notice that underneath this item on our agenda, we have committee updates that are going to be verbal only, and that is because we aren't necessarily approving minutes for those committees, but that these committees have been active within the last couple of weeks, and I want to make sure that the happenings from those committees do indeed reach the public realm. So, we're going to kick things off with health and wellness update. Mrs. Sherman, are you prepared to give a brief synopsis?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So, health and wellness has been busy. There are several of us in this room that attended the annual breakfast through the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. They provided us so many resources and things that we can bring back into our schools and help our kids out. The Rhode Island Farm and Seed a School Institute, part of that is what we saw somewhat in the CTE program. I mean, Ms. Cusmano has done that hard work, but she's also participating in the Farm and Seed a School Institute, along with Mrs. Crager. And basically, that's providing opportunities to bring more of that farming to our kids in the building. It's a partnership with the schools, the community, and our cafeteria. So, Chart Wells is helping tremendously with that, and they're going to be promoting locally-sourced foods from farms that we're supporting, having events in the cafeterias and your kids' schools. So, a lot of that work is what's happening in the Wellness Committee. But other things, too, and Shannon, I thank you for mentioning it earlier. We have a food pantry here at the high school, and so you can always, if you feel like you want to support and provide a donation, you can always contact Ms. McCarthy. That's something we talked a little bit about at the Wellness Meeting. Wald's Kindness Caucus at Ranger, they're always in need, and you can contact Ranger to see if there's anything that they need help with. And I believe they're also working on a shoe initiative for kids that need sneakers, Kicks for Cameron. Again, you can reach out to Ranger, and whatever we can do to support the needs in this community right now with everything that's going on, I think we should reach out, if possible, if we can provide that support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Next, we have the TMS boosters update. Again, Mrs. Sherman.
Yes, thank you. So, the middle school had a meeting last week for boosters, and it was outstanding. There were twenty parents in attendance. Ms. Miller's here. She's heading up this program with Shannon McDonough and other parents that are eager and actively involved. There was so much enthusiasm, and there were parents that couldn't attend but wanted to, correct? So, to have twenty in attendance, plus everyone else that wants to participate, there's a lot of energy there, a lot of great ideas, tons of engagement. So, I highly encourage you, if you have a middle-schooler or a soon-to-be middle-schooler, get involved, contact Denise, contact Shanna. So much energy to support athletics at the middle school level, so really good work that you all are doing. Thank you for inviting me to that meeting.
And I would, you know, welcome any of our boosters or PTOs if they wish to give an update at any of our meetings. They're welcome to get on this agenda under the committee update section, because we'd love to hear from you. We want to make sure that everyone is aware of all of the good volunteer-type activities that happen within our schools.
Ms. McNamara, too, I'd be remiss just to not recognize that the middle school PTO has been taking on that responsibility for quite some time now. So, kudos to them, because that's a lot to run a PTO and a boosters, and I applaud the parents that are stepping up to help. Yeah, please come up.
Hello. So, one of the things, you brought up a good topic, and one of the things, and one of the reasons why I felt like I needed to step up and volunteer to do this is because I feel like we're lacking... feel like we're lacking the school spirit in the town. I feel like we need to love where you live and invest in your community. And one of the things also is to kind of bridge the gap amongst all of the committees. You know, we have Tempo, the boosters, high school boosters and everything, and I feel like everything is so separate. Everybody has their own little things, but I think if we can kind of bring everybody together, it'll help bridge the gap from middle school to high school, bring the pride back to town. I know why parents choose to send their kids out of district once they get to high school, but if we can save one or two kids and keep them in and see what we have here, we can make it work and make it a better place. And that's the goal for us right now. So if it's okay, can I just read our mission statement that we came up with? Okay, thank you. So, "The TMS Athletics Boosters Committee is a group of dedicated volunteers working together to support our athletic programs through fundraising, volunteerism, and facilitating communication within the school community. Our goal is to provide a top-notch experience for our student athletes while helping to cultivate positive school culture for all Tiverton Middle School students. Tiger pride." So that's what we're trying to facilitate at the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sherman. All right, next we have CILAC meeting update. Ms. Krager?
The CILAC Special Ed Local Advisory Committee met earlier this month. It was our second meeting of the school year under the leadership of Chris Kiraton. We reviewed the mission, approved minutes, and continued our focus on increasing family engagement and improving communication between the district and parents. We'll be setting up a virtual option for our next business meeting in January, and we actually changed the meeting location from Tiverton Public Library to Tiverton High School, and that was, that has been changed in our outreach materials. Two motions were discussed at the meeting, one to have case managers briefly introduce CILAC during an IEP or 504 meeting, and the other request was for district data to help guide CILAC's discussions moving forward. And Ms. Mara mentioned this earlier, our first CILAC workshop is on November 19th, and its topic is Building Strong Beginnings: Early Childhood Special Education to Kindergarten.
Thank you, Mrs. Krager. And I think I was in attendance at that meeting as well. Just to also add on to that, you gave a great update. There was also babysitting that was offered by a high school student, and we did have a couple of parents take advantage of that. The CILAC group is hoping to perhaps institute that on a more regular basis for their meetings to encourage parent participation. So I think that was great, and thank you to our high school students for helping out. All right, next, building committee update. Mr. Haskins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At its most recent meeting, the building committee discussed the HVAC controls at Picassett Elementary School, automating these controls so that our school district employees are able to access the system and make changes when needed. We had substantive discussion about the maintenance of the HVAC system and systematizing all of the routine maintenance requirements of those systems. We are looking to engage with a partner related to modernizing our HVAC controls at Picassett Elementary School in future school buildings as the years go on. The building committee discussed the Tiverton Town Council approval for capital request. We focused on those items that were approved for capital requests and the next steps in those process, in that process. We also discussed the projects that were not approved that we will revisit with a capital request around March 1st. The building committee had discussion of our five years facilities plan and discussed future capital requests. We had some discussion about priorities for the district, and we will make room for that discussion at our next building committee meeting.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and last but not least, policy subcommittee update. Just before this meeting tonight, Ms. Parkett and I, as well as Mr. Haskins, Ms. Krager, and Mr. Andrade attended a policy subcommittee. We have a number of policies that are in the process of anything ranging from tweaking to outright new policies. Most significantly, a cellphone and electronic devices policy that we are required by state law to develop and have in place before August 1st of this year. We'd like to have it in place long before that, be on the lookout. There will be, the administration will be looking for community input to those policies. And so I expect that we will have that on our agenda probably for the next few meetings as we look to develop those policies. Beyond that, we, again, tweaks to a couple of policies, expect to see those on first read by January or even as early as December in some cases, and we'll take it from there. A lot of good work happening there. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Madam Chair, I just, I don't know if you guys discussed it before because I obviously missed a few meetings because of my work schedule, but just for clarification from the committee and certainly the public, what's the differentiation in your mind between verbal committee updates and the general business items? I'm just trying to get a sense of what you're trying to include in one section versus the other.
Each of these committees produces minutes.
Okay.
That will be reviewed and approved at their next meetings, which of course...
Including our booster groups.
That one's more of a PTO. I don't know if they have minutes.
We have a secretary.
Which is, which is fine. I mean, you're independent of us. I'm just trying to get a sense of what's in this section.
I'm trying to get the information flow to improve.
Okay.
So that, you know, we have full view, and our town has full view of all the activities that are taking place outside of this particular meeting. That's really the only goal. And again, these are not meant to replace official minutes, especially on the subcommittees. Those are being done separately, will be filed separately and voted upon, but I felt that, you know, especially in the case of, let's say, the CILAC building and policy meetings, right, they're not going to meet again for at least another month. And so if we don't speak to it tonight, nobody's going to be speaking to it at all for quite some time.
Okay. So like the boosters update could, we could also do those under general business and just, it wouldn't be a vote?
If they requested to be on the agenda.
Agenda for that, okay, okay. Yeah, no, I just, it's the first time I had seen it, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm sort of clear on what the differentiation is.
And I'm trying not to put too much pressure on people to have formal presentations, right? It's really just a communication thing.
Okay.
Before we leave the policy subcommittee, Kim, did you have anything you wanted to add at all?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. No, great observations, Deb. All right. So we will move on to general business, and we will have some votes here, consideration and possible votes. So we'll start with the CTE program highlights and upcoming CTE open house.
Hi, thank you again. So first of all, thank you very much for coming by and looking at our landscaping program that's taking place outside in this courtroom, courtroom, wow, courtyard. And that area is going to become like a living lavatory as we go forward. So first of all, thank you for letting me do a quick presentation. So our CTE open house is going to be Wednesday evening, November 19th, between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock. We welcome everybody to come, whether you have a child in the system or not, if you're a graduate, to come back and see. We're looking to seek 7th and 8th grade students particularly to come, and for those families to come visit and to find out, to come in to visit our programs and to see what we're doing. We have seven CTE programs. We have created five programs in five years. Carpentry and engineering are our first programs. We now have a Certified Nursing Assistant Program, Computer Science, Multimedia Arts, Public Safety and Law Enforcement, and our latest is Environmental Landscaping/Greenhouse Management. So what I did here is I went through each program very quickly. If you'll notice, the name of the program is Carpentry. And in gold, they have the three courses that the students have to take in order to be a completer. And then in white, we have the certifications that the student will be leaving our programs with so they can go on right into industry and can work day one, whether they decide to go to college or not. So the HBI Institute Certificate, OSHA 10 certification, and American Powers Tool and Safety Certification. Here are two pictures. On the left is a skiff that the Carpentry program is currently building, and on the right is a kayak that they have brought over to the Rhode Island Home Show on numerous occasions. The owner of that kayak no longer wants us to bring us to the home show because people keep trying to buy it off of the actual stand. So he's like, he's afraid it's not going to come home. Engineering is our second program. We have three programs in this process, Intro to Engineering, Principles of Engineering, and Computer Integrated Manufacturing. As you notice in white, these are all the credits that you can get is practically the way college credits for each of those courses. And if you pass the AP Chem or the AP Physics exams, this also contributes to the student being a completer. So you'll find that, I'm also the Science Department Chair, so I'm not just plugging our department, but I'm also just pointing out that the Science Department is actually woven through four of the seven programs, and this is one of them. And over here, we have a joint project. This is between the Tiverton Town Hall Shutter Project, this is between the Carpentry Program and the Engineering Program. On the left, you can see our Carpentry Program has built the shutters for Chief Jones, and on the outside are the shields that were made by our Engineering Program. We have a lot of great projects going on at Ranger, which is our partnership here for our plant landscaping program. Also, we have our Carpentry and Engineering Program, and our students went over there and have been building up, and there's later, there's up to dated pictures of how much they're building out to do some landscaping over there. We have a Certified Nursing Assistant Program. Those are the three courses that students have to take in gold. They get a CNA license upon graduation. 80% of our students who graduate through our CNA program actually become CNAs and actually work in nursing homes. They get CPR, First Aid, AED, and they get 40-plus clinical and skill lab hours at Brookdale. And they also get a chance to sit for the National Nurse Aid Assessment and Examination. And the students all who are completers, so 100% of our students who are CNA students are completers, they leave here with the certifications, and they do it before they actually walk the stage and get their diploma. Some of the highlights, this is our group from last year. They do HOSA, which is an organization that they are at the fall conference. They've been featured multiple times in Newport Daily News and Silicon Times. We offer two blood drives. One is coming up on November 7th, you're welcome to come, and we have another one in the spring. And that's actually, we do more blood drives than any of the CNA programs in the state. Our Computer Science Program has three classes that you have to take in that particular order, and if you end up getting a B or better in those courses, you get four URI credits. So any student that finishes the Computer Science Program can earn up to 12 URI credits. Or if you take one class and get a B or better, some credits. We also take the NOCTI examination, which is the National Occupational Certificate Testing Institute exam, and that's recognized throughout the entire country. Right now, this year, we currently have 73 students who are on track to earn several URI credits. Here's pictures of some of our students over the years. We partner with the Safety Day here in town, Bridgeport Seafood, and we also were featured in the Silicon Times, that's the article pitch on the right. And they're going to a URI Computer Science and AI Summit in December. The Multimedia Arts CTE Program, as you can tell, is we're making t-shirts, and they printed out 40 t-shirts in our printmaking class, sold out in two days, and they pretty much so have, trying to keep up with the demand. So if you want a shirt, please reach out, and we will be happy to accommodate you. I think they're about $15 a shirt, and the funds go back into our program to keep funding more. Here's our students working on our printmaking programs. And there's the shirts right over there. The Multimedia Arts has several ways you can go through the program. You could take one of the three classes. You get NOCTI certification, AP College Credits, and also EEP College Credits. Public Safety, we have Forensics, Public Safety, Civics, and Criminal Courts. Forensics is one of the classes that you take through our science programs. You get New England Tech College Credits and NOCTI Certification. We have Forensics Day, New England Safety Day, we basically do. I'm highlighting Lieutenant Le Duke and our SRO Jackie Smalldoon, who's done a great job with our curriculum. Our curriculum has been written with and taught with the Tiverton Police, so Andy Gachuk teaches with the Police Department on that. And just a shout out, we have 65% of the students in the program are female. So the Department of National basically recognized us about two years ago because we consistently have a higher number of females going into more of a male-dominated field. Our Environmental Landscaping Program, which is brand new, we currently have about 30 students in that pathway. We have several different ways that students can go through those programs. You get OSHA 10 Certification, URI Pesticide Safety Exam Preparation Class. If you want to take the pesticide applicator's license, students can do that and graduate with that. They'll get CCRI Credits and NOCTI Certification. And this is some of the pictures of the greenhouse. That is one of our lead students on the right, Magnus. He's the leader of our club, which has 75 students and faculty members part of it, on next slide. Over there is our Farm and Seed Institute. I give a shout out to them, and we did the tasting here, and that is the Donna Humphreys on the left. And we have a lot of support from the town of Tiverton, and we're going to be doing a cleanup very soon, so we're reaching out to let you know who wants to come out and do some beach clamps with us. This one last fact, our Tiverton High School CTE students over the last few years, if you look at the 23-24 school year, we had 38 students who completed the pathways. That means that not only did the coursework, but they got all of the proper certifications. And one student completed two programs. In 2024-2025, we had 58 completers, five students completed two programs, and that was quite a large class. This year's class is a little smaller, so we have 61 people who are on track to be completers, and four students who are on track to complete two CTE programs. At the current time, we have over 70, about 72% of the Tiverton High School students are currently in one CTE program. That's it.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open the floor to the school committee. Does anyone have any question or discussion points?
Just quickly, I wanted to, when we were on the tour, you made a very, actually, you didn't, one of our past students at Tiverton made the point that they received so many credits who actually went in as a sophomore instead of a freshman?
Can I bring him up to say?
Sure.
This is Tyler Brontis, he graduated last year.
Hi Tyler. That's just, that's such a good data point, I think, for our parents that not everyone realizes, so based upon, you know, tell us a little bit about what you did.
Yes, so through the AP courses here and through the CTE pathway, I only completed the Engineering Pathway, but through all the credits, I was able to get through here. I was able to, I'm essentially in my sophomore year in college. And the only reason I'm not farther than that is because my college only accepted so many of those at one time, but, you know, the CTE programs here, I think I only even got college credits for two of the classes, not three of the Engineering ones. It's possible to go really far just using the resources available here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And he earned, he passed just about all of his AP exams, so he's a crackerjack.
Yeah. I do have a question. You spoke about the blood drive coming up. Is that open to the public? Is that just for the school?
I think it's for the school at the moment, but we're going to have some other blood drives. I'd like to do one in the spring that's open to the public. But as a CNA program, we have done more blood drives than all the other CNA programs in the state. We normally do one, we always do two.
Anyone else?
Yeah. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. You've added five CTE programs in five years?
One a year.
That's amazing. I don't know that anyone really understands because it's a tremendous process to put together the course schedule, put in your application with RIDE, get everything approved, and get the program started, correct?
Yes, it's quite a heavy lift. So the first thing you have to do is you have to pass an application to say, I'm going to apply, and you have to earn like 18 or 16 points out of 20. And you have to prove that you have enough students in the pathway, enough interest, the teachers are properly certified. So that's the first piece. And then within two weeks, you have a bunch of time to get a 30 to 40-page application in to ride. And then they come through, and then sometimes if they have questions, you may have to go further into that process. Thank you for recognizing that.
I think it's such an important piece to note because you hear people saying, we need more pathways, we need more pathways. I don't know that it can be done any more aggressively than it's already been done, and I applaud that. This is not a huge school. To have seven pathways and five added in five years is tremendous. And Mr. Brontis, thank you for speaking because I was going to say the same thing, Deb. Everyone needs to hear that quote. What's an AP exam cost?
$99.
$99. What's a college course cost?
God, I don't even know anymore. I'm still shell-shocked. My kids are way out now. I'm still shaking from those bills.
Much more than that.
Much, much more than that.
Hundreds, if not thousands.
But the purpose of how we've gotten there is, first of all, we have, and I'm not giving you a line, we have a tremendous community. We have parents that are here, people that care. Everybody here in this room cares about our town. We also have, you raise great kids who care and try and work hard. And I can't say enough about the faculty. We have tremendous people that work around the clock here, who want the best for our students. So it's not like this one person doing it. It's a joint effort from many, many people. And you cannot do it without a supportive school committee and an administrative team. So thank you for what you do for us.
It's just so invaluable to note that. And so not only are you getting ahead in school, you save some money too, which is pretty important these days. But the other distinction is, a lot of these programs make them workforce-ready. So you can be a, start as a CNA, or maybe you did the CNA Pathway because you're going into medical school. It serves both purposes so well. So thank you.
You're welcome. We're looking for other ways to get more students here in some other programs, so we'll have some more surprises coming through.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How many students are coming in from other districts right now?
I don't have the numbers offhand, but we have quite a number of kids growing over the years. And they come here for different programs, for different ideas. And we have about two, three students this year I know. I remember bringing them aboard when they were freshmen. So a lot of kids come in for a variety of reasons, but they look very specifically for specific programs that we have. And it's the word of mouth from the students. And it's basically when the community works together and parents really help us out, that's very, very important for us.
And if anyone wanted a T-shirt, how would they go about ordering a T-shirt?
Oh, well, first of all, if you want a T-shirt, obviously you can email it to the school, and we'll get it over to the right people. And if you want tonight any information about the Open House, we have flyers there that are here. And I'm Lee Cusmano. I live at the school, so you can email anytime. And if you want a personal tour, if you can't come in, or if anybody here has children and you're not sure if you want to, you know, the programs you want, I'll be happy to give you a personal tour.
Thank you.
You're going to have T-shirt merch at the Open House, I hope?
Oh, yeah. Well, at the Open House, we're going to have some games. I'm going to finalize our plans tomorrow. So you're going to get some merch, and you're going to get some cool ideas. So we have some really fun ideas, and we pretty much have about 30 kids already signed up to be here and more coming. So we're going to have to figure out where to put them all, but they're very excited to be here and tell you everything about our building.
Ms. Craig?
I just wanted to point out that Lee, Ms. Cusmano and her staff have also found really creative ways to include students with IEPs into all of these classes, and even students who are in more of our life skill programs, who have developmental disabilities. And they've really done a nice job at including the students with IEPs in all of those programs, so.
Thank you. We were recommended by the Department of Ed for based out to the community as we're inclusive. We don't say yes, no. We don't really turn around, turn down somebody unless there's an outstanding reason. But we welcome a lot of students to come to the school and to bring their talents.
Anybody else?
Just one more thing I forgot to add, and maybe Lee, you're not going to appreciate this, but somebody at the boosters meeting had an amazing idea for promoting the CTE Open House is, if you, you know, know anyone that wants to dress as the tiger and stand in the middle school pickup line and pass out flyers.
Well, funny that you said that because in tomorrow's meeting, I would like to know if anybody would like to help me on the line in the next couple of weeks to pass out those flyers and to do some explanations to fellow people and answer questions while they're waiting. I'm not joking. I already thought about that. I already went to your. So I don't have a dress attire. I don't think it's a good look for me.
He doesn't go with the Starbucks cup.
Well, thank you.
Don't go anywhere. Okay, next on our agenda, accepted $200 donation from the Tiverton Lions Club. Ms. Cusmano.
All right. So a few years ago, I was honored at a Lions Dinner, and then I liked what they did, so I became a Tiverton Lion. Quick thing, so the Lions Club is an international service organization composed of 1.4 million members. And they do a lot of things for our community, and they reach out in a variety of ways. Our vision screening next week is headed by our Lions Club. They also give and donate to many of our partners, especially our food bank. And they also give three $1,000 scholarships to our students. So for the last two years, they've given us small donations, but this year, they have given us a $200 check for us to use for our CTE Programs. So here's the check.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the $200 donation for the CTE Programs from the Tiverton Lions Club?
I'll make that motion.
Second. And any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you to the Tiverton Lions Club. Ms. Cusmano, thank you for taking half of our meeting this evening. All right, next up, we have Approved Student Handbook 2025-26 School Year for the Tiverton Middle School. Mr. Zatoli, welcome.
Thank you. I think two school committee meetings ago, we had the discussion about the cell phone policy and bus. We did not change that under your directive. Other than gave us a chance to clean it up from an aesthetic point of view, there were no changes made. But it's a little bit of an easier read for parents now.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Tiverton Middle School Handbook? Motion to approve Tiverton Middle School Handbook?
Second.
Okay, and is there a discussion?
There's a few things that I was, when I went through this, I was looking at. On page 17, you mentioned that parents will be subject to penalties, including fines of up to $50 per day of absence.
Is that under the attendance?
It's in the truancy section, yeah.
Yeah, that's nothing that we've ever held a parent to. I do believe, and I only say this because about every two weeks, we have court in session here, and there are some children and parents that are threatened with that. But that's at the court level. That's certainly nothing I have pursued, so.
May I respond?
Yes, please.
This reflects Rhode Island Statute 1619-1, which compulsory attendance requiring all children to attend public schools or to attend school every day that school is in session. The statute itself identifies a fine. As far as I know, there has never been a fine levied on a parent for a student who is truant in the state of Rhode Island.
Okay, just looked quite horrifying, to be honest with you. Maybe we should discuss attendance policy at our next policy meeting?
The attendance policies are embedded within the handbooks, I believe. It is not a school committee policy.
Okay.
By virtue of us approving these handbooks, they are, in essence, the district's policy.
Okay. Page 49, you mentioned a school committee suspension. The school committee may exclude a pupil for up to 180 school days after a full hearing.
That is correct.
So the school committee gets involved with discipline?
On rare occasions. It has happened in my tenure. I know, Mrs. Palish, you've been on that as well.
It's rare.
It is rare.
So now site-based management, that's still something that could come across to the school committee?
Absolutely.
Okay. Page 64, you mentioned an online class for students through Tiverton Prevention Coalition. It's for...
Is that part of the diversion program?
Yeah, I'm trying to think when we would have enacted that. I'm not sure.
I believe that was in the previous version of the handbook as well. It's been there for some time.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think. I don't know if we've ever enacted that. While I've been here, you know, there's been different variations of homeschool and Pearson Online. Not sure about the diversion one, to be honest with you.
Okay, I was going to ask for the link because I was just curious to see what that involved. But if you're not using it, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? I do have a few things. I did a comparison between this year and last year, and that is primarily because we didn't receive a redline version of this. And I didn't, truthfully, I didn't ask for it in advance, so I don't feel I should hold you to it. But in the future, and I've already spoken with Mr. Haskins about this for any and all handbooks, that we really should get a redline version so that we can quickly see what the changes are. So that being said, I did notice some changes that I'd like you to speak to. One is the core values in Tiger's Matrix that was in last year's version that isn't in there this year, right? The T-I-G-E-R-S. Is there a reason why that was dropped?
No, I think that was put in prior to me being there, so that's not really something that we do. You know, we have core values there, but we don't necessarily go by those things.
Okay, so you just felt it wasn't necessary?
Yes, we certainly do other things in creating the culture there.
Obviously, with the inclusion of the fourth graders in the middle school building, you know, there had to be some updates to this particular manual to accommodate for that. I did notice on the listing on page 10 of the year-long co-curriculars, speaking specifically to Physette. It calls out grades five to eight specifically. Do the fourth graders have different co-curriculars where it concerns Physette? Do they get fewer?
No, I still think, I believe that they still get the same amount of PE. I believe even more. Obviously, that's a, they're sort of on a different schedule than five, six, seven, and eight, but they still get art. We bring over the teachers from the elementary school to teach those classes.
Right, it's handled differently, and I do know that.
Yeah, they still get that recommended amount of PE with Mr. Murray.
Okay, and that's the most important part, absolutely. On page 15, the school social worker is mentioned. And again, I was doing a comparison to last year's version, and last year it mentioned psychologist and social worker. So I said, okay, well, you've changed it to just social worker. However, there is still reference to the psychologist within the text. So I guess my question is, do you have a school psychologist?
We do not have a school psychologist, but we added a .6 social worker to fill that need.
So for perhaps the next iteration of this, you know, we make sure that it's going to align?
Yes.
I don't think it's a huge miss, but it's just a small thing I saw. I did note that you removed the guest speakers section from there. And honestly, that is covered by school committee policy, so I am completely in agreement with you removing that. I also made note that you expanded significantly on the distance learning section. I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that a little bit, to the changes that you made to that section. I know you added, and I see you don't have it in front of you, so I'm going to try and help.
That's all right. I think we added the schedule for that day so they would have it, even though we would put that out, whether it's a snow day, distance learning day, half day. We usually put that out a day or two before on the blast, but we figured we'd put it under those for another.
It's good information. You have the schedules not only for the distance learning slash snow days, but you also have the schedule for early release days, of which I believe tomorrow is one.
Correct.
So they'll be following.
And they're all a tad bit different.
Yeah. You've also listed the early dismissal dates, and this is good for parents to reference. So thank you. I just wanted to call out that that was indeed expanded. Also make special note of the fact that the code of conduct was split between grade four and grades five through eight because there are different interpretations of the code of conduct there. So I encourage parents to read through those sections as it pertains to their kids. And then, again, I noted that you removed several of the school committee policies, and that was really per my request. Mainly, the school committee policies, as we update them, we don't want your handbooks, which, if you're putting them in there, to fall out of date. Let's have one version of the truth and not in the handbooks. Certainly make reference to school committee policies, which you do, but not to have the complete policies in there.
Correct.
And then I also noticed the very last page that you removed the referral form sample. I guess you felt it wasn't necessary. And this was with the bullying, I think, the bullying form.
Correct.
So again, just wanted to call attention to these things, not really criticisms, a couple of little things. These handbooks, they're lengthy. They're a work in progress. You know, and I, to Ms. Parkett's point, she's made it a couple of times, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with this, that we should be looking to approve these policies sometime in August of next year prior to the new school year as we go. So let's set that as our goal.
Yeah, and I think we can get you like a redline version of that.
Yeah, appreciate that. And that would apply also to the high school and to the elementary school versions, not just yours.
Actually, our policy says they should be presented to us at the first regular meeting in May.
Really? Well, aren't you the policy queen? So we might want to look at that.
But we have never held to it, again.
Yeah.
It's a guide, but I think it speaks to Kim's great point that, you know, just to get them as quickly as we can, just have a few minutes. But thank you for all of the excellent updates, Mr. Zatoli.
On those rare occasions, they are our bible, you know, and we try to live by them, and so I appreciate.
And they're an important communication between this school committee and our schools.
Agreed.
You know, it's probably one of the only places where we get involved with the quote-unquote "operation" of the schools. So it's important that we understand what's in these handbooks and that we all agree with the content by and large. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, so we had a vote, and we had a second. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor? 4-0, thank you. All right. Next up, discussion and possible vote to approve the Tiverton High School trip to Greece in 2027. And before you even start, I'd like to be a chaperone. Am I too old?
David Landauk. Samantha Santos is going to give you a little slideshow there on paper. We are thinking about, what we want to do is bring back our cultural experience by traveling with students again. I talked to Superintendent Haskins. He said that it would be a good idea to discuss it with you guys, to seek your approval. And we were looking into a trip to Greece to, and I already know I have chaperones, but... And with this, we would be hitting our cultural awareness. We're getting kids to work on their collaboration, communication throughout our school goals and things like that. So that's, we're just looking for a blessing. I mean, these guys can talk more on it.
Tiverton High School has done many in the past, but since COVID, we haven't done any. So we've gone to Portugal, we've gone to Spain, Mexico, Peru, Costa Rica. And it was just such an amazing experience for the students. We've always used EF Tours, which is Educational First Tours, and they're internationally known. They have a wonderful reputation of keeping everyone safe and insured and answering all of our questions and help us with fundraising and things like that. So we just really want to bring that back and give that experience to the students now that haven't been able to travel much.
Okay, so I'm going to recommend a motion that we give preliminary approval for a 2027 Tiverton High School trip to Greece. Because obviously, there's a lot of time between then and now. I would like to have our school committee voice their support or their non-support for it so that you can commence with your fundraising and planning. But this doesn't, but I would like for you to come back when you have a certainty that you do intend to take this trip. Because I really, you know, this is the beginning stages. Does that sound fair?
Yes, we just need to gauge student interest.
Yes.
And we know that we have at least four chaperones, and we can take six students per chaperone, per the EF rules. So we just want to put that out to like the seniors and juniors for next year and gauge interest. And if we have enough interest, then we are definitely interested in.
Okay, so may I have a motion to give preliminary approval for the 2027 Tiverton High School trip to Greece?
I'll make that motion.
I have a second for discussion?
I have a second for discussion.
Yep, and I will open the floor to discussion.
So you answered two of my questions, I think, I heard. So it's going to be only juniors and seniors?
Yes.
And it's a 6 to 1 student to chaperone ratio. If anybody is curious, they have some really excellent safety points here. 24/7 emergency support, full-time tour director. So this is based upon our experience with EF in the past, right?
Yes.
Okay. Those were my big questions.
Have you, and because it's been some time, have you been in touch with any other districts that have engaged with EF more recently to make sure that things are still going well with them?
I was an EF Tours kid when I was in high school, which was 10 years ago. But I've been on these tours before. They're really supportive in all manners. There is a contract that you have to sign as a student to go on the trip for conduct and behavior reasons. Beyond that, they are very organized. They have their own meeting that they will have with us. We have a tour, like contact individual named Lindsay, who's been in contact with us, who would run a meeting to gauge interest and then move forward. They do their own fundraising as well, and then get us all the information on the trip. The only thing that we, is kind of like a sticking point, is figuring out the exact dates, but that's going to be on the district calendar for our April vacation.
That's fair.
Is there a max? Like, we wouldn't want to do more than so many, 20? I don't even know. Is there, is there a max?
We have four chaperones. Luke Bane is also a chaperone.
Oh, so now we're up to, yeah, we're already 24 so far.
That would be 24 students. We think that's probably enough.
Yeah.
That's a good size group.
Yeah.
And this cost, is this, is, I mean, because I know you're not going to go, so it's $5,000 per person. That's going to sort of stay where it, it's not going to go up dramatically from that.
Right, that's what EF Tours is, that's what they're saying it will be, so that's what we're planning on.
Oh, good.
For fundraising, that's what we're.
So they've sort of given you already their projected cost for when you're going?
Right.
Excellent.
Are they requiring deposits?
They have payment plans that the kids can join in on. Otherwise, I believe there are like hard dates, once we set an actual date for when we're going, on when funds are due.
Okay. In the, I'm thinking about the state of our world and safety. I see travel insurance is included in here.
Yes.
If there was political upheaval, economic upheaval, would that be covered in those plans?
Yep.
Yep. The only thing that is not covered is if a student goes out of the behavior guidelines.
Okay.
Then they wouldn't get refunded for anything, if they had to like get sent home because they didn't follow the rules or took off when, you know, things like that. Everything else is covered.
I'd like to know more about that.
Anyone else have questions?
So you answered one of my questions. It would be around like an April vacation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So they would miss only one day of school, based on like the timeline that we have for the trip? It would be the Friday before April break.
So just thinking about that safety is like, what happens when it's nighttime and you're not officially touring? And kids wander off? Like, how do you monitor safety?
So that's part of their conduct, is that once we turn in for the night, they have to go back to their assigned rooms. And we're all typically in the same hallway, so the chaperones will be in the same hallway as the students for like bunking. I know when I went, the chaperones also did like nighttime activities to kind of tire you out before bed, so we'd look into something like that as well, like play games and do stuff like that.
And Dave and I have also, we've both chaperoned basketball trips with the teams to Florida. So we're, you know, in hotels where it wasn't all in the same hallway either.
There are very few kids that can get by you two.
We kind of know their, how they're thinking. And also, when the students are, you know, signing up for interest, their conduct prior to is, you know, will count whether or not they would be able to be a candidate for the trip.
Absolutely. So juniors and seniors, like, have, what's the eligibility? Like, they had to have taken a certain history class? Like, who can say, hey, I'm interested, I want to go?
Anyone.
Any of them can say that they're interested. If we have more than the 24 that will say, yes, we can fundraise this much money and go, then we would have like a lottery, we'd probably do a lottery system if we have that much interest.
What do you do for a kid who's so interested and absolutely cannot afford this?
We're doing a lot of fundraising. We have, I said, we can't plan anything specific because we weren't approved yet, and I don't want bad luck. So if we get the approval, we'll just start fundraising right away. And we've, between us, we've done a lot of fundraising over the years.
Any other questions?
Just the ratio is 6 to 1 ratio. Is that what they've done in the past?
Yes.
And that works out? You don't have to?
Yep.
It just seems like a lot of kids to one person. And I think you pretty much answered all of my other questions that I had. Looks like an awesome trip, cruise. Everything's included? You have all the bases covered?
All right. If there is no further discussion, show of hands, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Commence the fundraising. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Can I just make a note?
Yes.
Just piggyback to the other field trip we talked about, field trip policy.
That is a separate issue, not on our agenda tonight.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, RICAS School Reports. Ms. Krager and our principals who are waiting patiently.
Thank you. So we're going to go through several slides. I think it's probably best to hold questions till the end, because questions you might have might, the answers might come up in following slides. So if we just start out, so this is for our RICAS scores, grades 3 to 8. Our agenda is, we will look at students who are meeting and exceeding expectations in ELA and math. We'll look at district growth scores. And then our principals will dive a little bit deeper into the overall scores, looking at the specific strengths and areas of improvement in their schools. So this slide shows our 2025 RICAS English Language Arts results, specifically the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in grades 3 and 4, so our elementary students. Key highlights here is when you look at grade 3 ELA performance, both Fort Barton and Ranger were performing at about twice the state average. At Pecasset, they are performing just below the state average. Our grade 4 students in all elementary schools are performing well above the state average in English Language Arts. At Fort Barton, 56% of the students met or exceeded expectations. And at Pecasset, it was just over 51%. State average is 34%, so both schools are performing about 1 and 1/2 times higher than the state average.
Can you, before you go any further?
Yep.
Which slide are you on? Because you lost me real quick, and I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just the first one.
Yep. Okay, I had moved ahead to math.
Okay, sorry, not yet, next. And I just did, want to point out that I think those scores really highlight the strength of our early literacy instruction. I know this happens, these tests occur in 3 and 4, but it really is a story of what happens between K1, 2. And then they take the tests in 3 and 4. So it does highlight our early literacy instruction and how well students are building those foundational reading and writing skills. The next slide shows our RICAS math performance, again, looking at the state average and the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. Across all three elementary schools, our results in math continue to outperform the state by a substantial margin. At Fort Barton, 73% of grade 3 and 64% of grade 4 students met or exceeded expectations, nearly double the state average. Pecasset had 72% of grade 3 students meet or exceed expectations, and 45.5% in grade 4, showing very strong foundational math instruction, again, in those early years. And at Ranger, 82.6% of our grade 3 students met or exceeded expectations. That's one of the highest percentages we've seen in math. So shout out to our teachers at Ranger. So then we're just going to go into each of the elementary schools a little bit and break up those scores. So the slide shows both ELA and math. At Fort Barton, the ELA continues to perform at a very high level. Over the past several years at Fort Barton, the results have remained consistently strong, ranging from 60, mid 60s to mid 70s. And this year, 73% of the students met or exceeded standards. The same consistency is evident in math. Results have remained within a narrow and strong range between 66 and 77%. And this year, 73% of students met or exceeded standard. So the 3rd and 4th grade at Fort Barton last year has been, they were consistently high in both ELA and math. This consistency reflects a strong Tier 1 instruction, core instruction, we call that. It reflects early intervention when needed and the continued focus on foundational skills that begin again at those primary grades. I'm going to stand, yep, I'm just going to go through the math now. So in math, results show a similar upward trend. We started at 48.8%. Does that sound, does that look right up there? Yeah, there it is. So math is the right side, yeah. Okay, I started at 48.8% in 2021, and this year, 64% of grade 4 students met or exceeded standards. And that's a steady climb over time. This consistency shows us and reinforces the success of our Eureka Math Squared rollout. We have been using Eureka Math for several years. It had a a new version of Eureka Math 2, or Eureka Math Squared, and that did change some of our instructional practices, but it looks as though those practices are enhancing our overall scores. So overall, Fort Barton's grade 4 results reflect the same stability and strength we see in grade 3. High-quality instructive instruction, effective early intervention, and strong curriculum alignment. Okay, so it's a similar slide. The first group on the left is ELA for the last five years, and math on the right side for the last five years. In ELA, we saw several years of strong progress, from 35.5% in 2021 up to 60% last year. However, this year's data shows a drop to 36%. It's important to remember with this, that this particular group who took this assessment was small. They only had 25 students tested this year. Last year, they had 36 tested. With smaller cohorts, even a few students can significantly shift the overall percentage. And when we just take a closer look at that, many of the students who scored, so I'm reporting students who met and exceeded standard. Right before that is a band of students who partially exceed, met standards. So those who scored in that partially proficient range were just within 2 to 3 points of meeting the benchmark. So while the percentage looks lower, the performance levels are clustered right near proficiency. So with that in mind, we also have the note that Pecasset had one less full-time reading specialist last year, after seven years of having two reading specialists at Pecasset. So that's where we catch those students in that partially proficient range. So I think that impacted the amount of targeted interventions, obviously, that were available for our students at Pecasset. In math, the picture remains really positive. Performance has grown steadily from 30.8 to 2021 to 72% this year. That's more than double the original rate and highlights how well students are mastering those foundational concepts early on and learning that Eureka Math Squared highly-quality curriculum materials as well. All right, so moving on to our grade 4 students at Pecasset. In ELA, we continue to see steady growth overall. Back in 2021, 36.6% of students met or exceeded expectations, and this year, that increased to 51.1%. It's worth noting that this group has really benefited from foundational work that's been happening in our early grades. The last two years, we have had a strong emphasis of science of reading. If you remember that, all of our teachers were trained in letters, which supports the science of reading. And then, along with our foundations, high-quality curriculum materials and wit and wisdom, it really does support the comprehension and vocabulary development. In math, performance has been stable and strong. We've seen results hover around 44 and 45 for several years. We did have that spike last year at 63.6. We came back to 45.5% this year, but we're still well above where we started. So for Pecasset's grade 4 students, both ELA and math show strong sustained progress over time. And like I've said, we've, I think we've built a solid foundation in both areas. There are small year-to-year fluctuations, but overall, the trajectory remains positive. And then finally, we'll review Ranger's grade 3 performance first, again, on the left side. ELA at Ranger has shown steady and consistent performance over the last several years. Results remain strong, generally within the mid 60% range, with this year, 63% of the students meeting or exceeding expectations. So the stability again shows that our core literacy practices have really taken root. In math, the growth story is even more impressive. Results have climbed each year from 55.6% in 2021 to 82.6% this year. That's a remarkable increase. And it reflects both consistent, high-quality instruction and strong student engagement with that Eureka Math Squared. The group has clearly built a solid understanding of mathematical concepts and problem solving. So overall, Ranger's grade 3 results show steady progress, and ELA and exceptional growth in math. The consistency across multiple years points to strong instruction, alignment, and a well-established culture of learning. In 4th grade at Ranger in ELA, after a few years of decline, we're starting to see an upward trend again, moving from 33 last year, 33%, excuse me, last year to 43.9% this year. That improvement tells us that the adjustments that we're making to instruction are beginning to take hold. Teachers have been intentionally focusing on skills through wit and wisdom, and we're seeing that reflected in this year's growth. We still have work to do, get back, to get back to higher levels than we've seen in the past, but this trajectory is, this year is certainly encouraging. In math, we've seen a pattern of fluctuation. Results were strong for several years, peaking 64.9% in 22, 23, and we're now sitting at 36.6%. We know that this year's results don't fully capture what we're seeing on a day-to-day basis in classrooms, because we do formative assessments and we do beginning, middle, and year assessments, and those are showing steady growth. Our teachers have already started to dig through these and some, looking at item analysis to see where students are struggling most. And we'll make those instructional changes as we dig a little bit deeper into those item analysis. All right, so we'll hear from Mrs. Pont and Ms. Donnelly Roach after we review Tiverton Middle School. So this is set up the same way. We're just going to look at how Tiverton Middle School looks, meeting and exceeding expectations, and then we'll, as a whole, and then we'll go right into the grade levels, 5, 6, 7, 8. So across all grades, Tiverton Middle School continues to perform above the state average in English Language Arts. Grade 5 students scored 36.8% meeting or exceeding compared to 30.8% statewide. Grade 6 stands out with nearly 47.3% meeting or exceeding, which is 14 points higher than the state average. And grade 7 came in at 39.8, and grade 8 reached 50.4%, again, well above the state's average of 34%. Is that math now? Yeah. Across all grade levels in math, Tiverton Middle School outperformed the state average. These reflect, again, steady performance and strong instructional foundations. These reflect, again, steady performance and strong instructional foundations in math across the middle grades. Students, this tells us that students are demonstrating a solid understanding of mathematical reasoning and multi-stepped problem solving. Okay, in grade five, in ELA, you can see that our scores have fluctuated. After peaking in 22 and 23 at fifty-four point one percent, results have dipped over the last two years. Our focus moving forward, actually, starting tomorrow, we have a half-day professional development, and it is all-around deep dive. We will be working on increasing the percentage of moving, again, that partially proficient, those students in that area, to meeting expectations. So we also are going to strengthen our writing, uh, writing across content areas. So in our meetings tomorrow, we're not just meeting with ELA teachers, but we're also having science and social studies and co-curricular teachers part of that, so that students have more authentic opportunities to apply their literacy skills. So they're not just doing that in ELA. In math, we are see, we're really encouraged about the upward trend. Scores increased from thirty-one point nine percent last year to forty-three point seven percent this year, a twelve-point gain. Teachers are working intentionally to help students explain their thinking and approach problem solving in multiple ways, and that's, you know, obviously translating into stronger In grade six, ELA on the left side, scores have remained relatively steady, consistently hovering around mid-to-high forties. This year, forty-seven point three percent of students met or exceeded expectations. That's right in line with the performance we've seen really over the past several years. In math, we also see a pattern of steadiness here. Scores have held in the low-to-mid-thirty range for several years, with thirty-three point three percent of the students meeting or exceeding expectations this year. The consistencies of these results tell us that our systems are stable and effective, but our next step is really about growth, helping more students move from partially proficient to meeting expectations. Grade seven shows the performance in ELA and math. In ELA, after a few years of lower performance, we are starting to see a clear rebound, and it's something we're excited about and celebrating in grade seven. Moving from twenty-five point six percent last year to thirty-nine point eight percent this year. That's an increase of more than fourteen percentage points, which is significant. This growth reflects the work teachers have been doing to strengthen students' writing and reading comprehension through text-based responses and through our wit and wisdom curriculum. And as a result, we're seeing more students able to articulate their thinking and connect ideas across texts. In math in grade seven, this really continues to be a bright spot. Results have increased again this year, up to thirty-nine percent, meeting or exceeding, and which is the highest in a five-year period. So overall, grade seven is seeing momentum building in both ELA and math. The instructional strategies are working, and this cohort is clearly on an upward trajectory heading into grade eight, as, in grade eight. Speaking of grade eight in ELA, we're seeing a very positive upward trend. After dipping last year to twenty-four point two percent, grade eight rebounded significantly to fifty point four percent this year, more than doubling that percentage. That growth is especially meaningful as it reflects how students are leaving middle school with stronger literacy skills and confidence heading into the high school. Math also shows a strong recovery this year. Again, after hovering around like mid-twenties to low thirties for several years, grade eight climbed to thirty-six point six percent, meeting or exceeding expectations, one of the highest we've seen at that grade level. All right, last year, we did not report growth scores, but this is something that we, as an admin team and our teachers, will be really digging into. It's helpful just to quickly review what a student growth percentile or SGP actually means. So RICAS just doesn't tell us how many students meet expectations or partially meeting expectations. It also tells us how much progress students are making compared to other students across the state who started at a similar level. So instead of just asking, did they meet the standard? Did they exceed the standard? The growth tells us how far did they move from where they started. The state calculates this by looking at each student's past performance and comparing their progress to peers with similar score histories. This gives us a much fuller picture of learning, because we can see not only achievement, but also how much students are growing, even if they haven't reached proficiency. So if we look at ELA, Tiverton's growth has, and this is all of Tiverton's, and this can be, um, we can bring this down to each of the schools, each of the grade levels, so we can really dig deep into this growth. But the Tiverton School District, we have seen steady improvement from forty-one percent in 21, 22, up to fifty percent in 23, 24, which is right at the midpoint of typical growth. This year, we'd like dip slightly to forty-six percent, but we're still solidly, solidly in that typical range. So it tells us overall that Tiverton students are continuing to grow at a typical rate compared to others, their other statewide peers, meaning that instruction is supporting progress at all performance levels. The good news is, is that our growth data confirms that students are moving forward, even if proficiency percentages fluctuate, as you saw in some of those previous slides. So we'll look at the math ones now. So Tiverton's math growth has been remarkably consistent over the past four years, ranging from forty-five to forty-eight percent, all within typical growth range. The stability shows that students are continuing to make steady progress year over year, even as we focus on deepening conceptual understanding and problem-solving skills. While our growth has been held steady, the data also tells us that there's an opportunity to move more students in that high-growth territory. So that's something that we're gonna be looking at as we want more of the students in that achievement level to move forward. We really wanna look at these growth levels, too. So that, this tells us a lot about what we can do in interventions, like when we're doing interventions either in the classroom or with a reading or math specialist. So overall, our math and ELA growth patterns are really similar, steady, typical growth, that sustaining progress over time. And now I'm gonna have our principals talk a little bit more about their scores. And Andy, you're first.
I'm just gonna mostly mention what Mrs. Craig said tonight. Tomorrow, we will armor our teachers with the necessary stuff, including data analysis, all of the children's writing from last year, so they, they can look at and say, what's, what's the difference between the score of a two and a seven? Then they'll meet individually with the students over the year and, and, and show those scores. So tomorrow will be, will be definitely a deep dive day, and they'll have all the packets ready to do that great work. I have to give a shout-out to the middle school staff. I, I think you guys know, we took, we lost a tremendous amount of people the last two years, and I don't wanna make it sound like a poor me, because that's sometimes public education. You roll for a couple of years, and then you're down. I get it. But, um, middle school's a weird, wonky age, and that, those budget cuts impacted our schedule, our MTSS, our bridge program. You know, we had two math interventionists, two reading interventionists that are really almost cut down to about point two-five. And again, this isn't a poor me, 'cause I, I say it more because of how hard our math, our, our middle school teachers worked last year to maintain those scores, and there are some bright spots, and we will tackle the spots that don't look so, so well, so thank you.
So before, would it be okay if we started asking questions at this time?
I think that's a great idea. Yep, for middle school.
For middle school, and then we'll, we'll go back to the elementary schools. So I will put it out there. Anyone here have questions with respect to the middle school at this time?
Just, just quick, and, and, you know, you guys, you guys know, um, do we see a dip in scores at all, fifth grade, just because, which would be, you know, fourth grade now, but just because of the transition sometimes from, from an elementary setting to a middle school setting? Can that, can that impact their scoring, or when do they test? I guess I don't.
That's a good question. They test in April. All of our, all of our students test, test in April.
So perhaps by that time, you wouldn't see that sort of an impact, because they've already been there? Okay.
Yeah, and I, I think, for example, and this was one of the weaker spots, when I was looking at the data over the last couple of days, is the writing pieces. You know, there's a really big difference between a score of, say, a two and a six. You know, and I think this is two, sort of twofold on that. We need to prepare our, our kids to write with great grammar, spelling, you know, a well-conceived paper that's well-thought-out, well-written. And if you just show up with a two or three sentences, you're really not helping yourself. And I think, um, you know, we're gonna, we prepare our kids, as, as Mrs. Craig said, we're gonna write across the curriculum, so whether they're walking into a health class or a gym class, it could be a quick write, a small paragraph about a topic they're, they're doing, and certainly, they're doing a ton of writing within their wit and wisdom program. But it's also that other side of it in the middle school, frankly, is kids who are, tends to be where kids get a little henry, and they're not happy about school, and, and we need to build relationships with, with those children, so that the day of the test comes, that they will work hard. And we've put a lot of strategies into place. I think, you know, the part, sort of the hidden part, I think, of the middle school is how many great things are going on, and how much we love and support those kids, and it starts with me, and I say that in all sincerity.
Thank you. I'll throw you a question. And actually, it's not a question, it's more of a statement, and this applies not only to the middle school, but for the district in its entirety, but it includes the middle school. I'm seeing throughout these slides reference to tomorrow's PD day, and it, it really does make me thrilled to know that our teachers are working together to bring improvements to the educational outcomes for our kids. They are the experts in their fields. They know the kids better than anybody. And I do, I'm not sure, is this a first for our district, this type of day? Or is this something that happens every year?
So this is the first time we've really set something up, like we, the four of us have set up for tomorrow. I think it will, I agree, I think we foresee this being a really powerful day of, and time for us to look through the scores with everybody. The principals have done a fabulous job getting information ready, so it's easily accessible for our teachers, and teachers can just start talking about it. And we're not just doing it with grade three teachers, like I said, we're bringing in our first, second, and third-grade teachers at the elementary level, because it is a story of K to, K to four, but our K teachers are doing something a little bit special with something else. So I think that is going to be powerful, because what our third-grade and fourth-grade teachers decide their goals are, our first-grade and second-grade teachers have to make sure that's happening at their level as well, so it's a consistency. And then what Mr. Zitoli and Mr. Kellert are doing at the middle school, including those co-curriculars, and they're gonna be part of that conversation. So again, they're gonna know the goal that our, all our teachers are working on, our ELA teachers, and then they have to support it, too. So we are looking forward, thank you for recognizing that. Fortunately, it's only two and a half hours. We wish we had much more time, but it's important for us to find that time and do that with our teachers. So if it's not during a PD day, then we're gonna be creative and find some time for them to do that.
I also think that if they are able to spend that, I, two and a half hours devoted entirely to these discussions, that the discussions will continue outside of that day, just normally. You know, I'm sure teachers talk to each other every day.
They do, yeah, for sure.
And you're working with them at the faculty meetings, and, and, you know, they, if they could see the difference in, in the kids as a result of the work that they've put in, in that two and a half hours, it, it's, it's well worth it. So that's great. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Zitoli?
Good evening. I know, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Craig for putting together the presentation and pointing out the changes, just to speak for Pecassett briefly, and then we'll take any questions jointly. There definitely was a significant shift in staffing, as I joined Pecassett about a year ago, and that had an impact. We also have fabulous teachers who work hard every day, and I am looking forward to the insights they come up with tomorrow. Just briefly, in ELA, focusing on third grade, since that's what we'll be working on this year, our strengths were definitely really strong foundational skills, and not just in reading, but also in language, things like the structure of language, the punctuation of language. If you dive deep into our scores, you can see that our students are great at organizing language and have both the language and literacy skills that are foundational for, for success. And we also had really steady growth scores. When we look at individual student growth percentiles, those growth scores were great in ELA. And we know that, as Mrs. Craig said, we had a lot of students just about proficient or meeting expectations, so we didn't focus our interventions there, as we had had the luxury of doing in the past, but that's something we wanna try and figure out, if we can do within our general ed classrooms. The growth opportunities are applying all the solid foundational skills our kids have to sort of problem-solving, looking at multiple texts, pulling language from texts, citing texts, those kinds of things, and supporting claims and essay writing, which is a lot to ask of an eight-year-old. But that's where we have opportunities for growth at Pecassett. And then briefly, in math, we had amazing skills with division, with the relationship between multiplication and division. We also had kids doing really well on the distributive property in third grade, fractions and things like that, fractional models, which are different ways of visually representing fractions. So our students really soared mathematically, and we also had really steady growth for individual students. We can see that both in our RICAS scores and also in the STAR scores. And opportunities for growth are kind of similar in terms of knowing they have really strong foundational or calculation skills, but then figuring out how to apply them. If there's a two-step word problem, a lot to ask for an eight-year-old, but something our students are doing pretty well on. And in both areas, we were above state averages and really, really strong in mathematics. So despite having changes in our staffing, we're really proud of our students' success.
And I wanna, Ranger had a great assessment result year, and I'm super proud of the teachers. And when I say that, and it's not just the teachers, but it's the whole entire staff that works with the students, because it takes a village. And, and we're a big vibrant school, and I think the teachers do an amazing job with getting to know the kids, working through any of their deficiencies or their weaknesses, and also having kids gain confidence in themselves and their ability to do great things. So in ELA, we had, we were above the state in everything, reading, writing, and language. We were, we had ninety-eight percent of our kids being proficient on being able to use text features to support ideas from passages, which is amazing, and also describing actions, point of view, and word meanings in context. Areas improvement is really around writing, complex tests, specifically writing, and the conventions that go along with it, and using the evidence. And that's our focus tomorrow. So I, it's, it's really relevant that we're jumping into this data, and, and we haven't even like gone as deep as we possibly can. This is just at a high level that we're looking at this. And then in our math, um, we made some really good growth in math, super growth in math, like yay Ranger in math. Above the state average in all domains, we had ten percent growth in grade three, which is very, it's substantial. You look at, you look at our strengths, and it goes everything from your foundational skills to being able to apply it. skills to being able to apply it. And then when you go to areas of improvement, there's things like math, right angles, and those are things that, if we know that it's a deficiency, we can do some extra work, you know, as far as homework assignments, morning work, things like that, to kind of beef up those skills. And Amy and I work closely together with, as far as trying to keep expectations the same in both buildings. Last year, I had a reading specialist who had an ill child, and so we didn't have the supports that we did with reading, and everybody kind of stepped up. And I just want to shout out to the teachers for really banding together and, and, and meeting that deficiency that we had in staffing. So questions?
Okay, I'll kick it off. I don't see anybody's mics going on real fast, so. I did notice the district overall, both at the elementary and middle school, performed above state averages almost always. There was one miss at Picassett, not by much, but there was one below state average report. Just something, you know, to, to recognize that we, you know, we are always going to have, would you like me to point it out? I saw it in the thing.
No, no, you're right.
Oh, okay.
Did I say something?
I'm like, oh, Amy's looking at me like, oh, no, really? Okay. So regardless, I, you know, and one of the things that came out was fewer reading specialists. You know, we, we had children who were getting much closer to one-on-one attention, extra attention in reading. And, and the fact that we were, we had to cut that had a direct impact on these scores. It's just in black and white. The one thing that confuses me a little bit, and maybe, you know, it's just an anecdotal thing, I saw throughout, in both schools, that grade three tended to score higher than grade four, in all of the years, right, even the five-year comparison generally. Any, any thoughts on that?
I don't know. We were talking about, and I know we had this conversation with fourth grade last year, of kids' time with books in their hands and reading, time on task reading. And we feel as though there's a little bit less of that. And I know that I, we were trying to get books in hands and have kids have conversations and text discussions and have different point of views, and then the students have a Socratic seminar about the different points of views that were in the different books. So it was something that the fourth grade teachers did recognize and were trying to work on. And I know our scores showed, I think it was like a 10% increase in ELA, and, and I don't know, same thing happened.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, definitely books are not always something kids go to first anymore, for sure. I wonder too, though, there's multiple ways to kind of slice the data, so the way we looked at it today was kind of in the big picture. We can look at it by cohort of student, sometimes privately, we look at it by classroom. And so there are differences there that wouldn't be appropriate, necessary to share in this forum, but, you know, sometimes it's, it's about the group of kids in front of you too. And so, you know, we're trying really hard to hold high expectations in terms of our curriculum and the high-quality instructional materials we have, but also make sure each kid gets what he or she needs to have higher growth. And so sometimes that means, what we always encourage teachers to teach to the students in front of them with the tools that we have and supplement. And so it, it gets tricky to generalize, because again, if we gave you a different slice of data, you might see something a little bit different. And, you know, more discreet or deeper dive changes it too. And so that's why we gave you that high level, and we're eager to see what the teachers find when they look deeply too.
No, and I, and I understand and recognize that. I also, you know, recognize that standardized testing is only one measure.
Yeah.
As, you know, for all of us to remember that. And I, I'll be the first to admit, it is only one measure, but it is a measure. I, just as a suggestion for Ms. Cragor, I know there was reference made to the partially proficient results. And I know, you know, these slides are great, because they're not too busy, that, that helps to understand some of this. But when you look at something like this, a, a member of the community might say, and I'm just looking at the slide that's in front of me right now, and this is Ranger, grade four, meeting or exceeding expectations, I'm gonna look at ELA, 43.9%. And understanding that there is X percent that are partially proficient, then you would have, finally, a does not mean or needs improvement, I don't remember what the, the description was there. It would be helpful to understand that if, you know, 43.9 are meeting expectations, how many are partially meeting expectations? And what does that really mean when they're partially meeting expectations? Obviously, there's room for improvement in their scores, that's, you know, obvious, but does that mean, I, I want to make sure that we all understand that 43.9 does not mean that 56.1% is failing.
So maybe at a, not by school, but just at a high level.
A district level, maybe?
Yeah.
By grade?
All elementary schools, all middle schoolers type, you know, just, just to get a general feel for that, maybe. Just a, just a thought.
Because I think it would be more than likely a positive.
Yeah, we could do like an add-on to this, and just look at that, partially proficient. And yeah, you're right, there's so, and, and Ms. Donnelly-Roch said this too, there's so many ways to look at data.
Yes.
Presented today is really how the state looks at data too, and that's how they determine our report card levels. So we want to use that data that's out there. One other, so yes, we can do that. One other thing that the Department of Ed has come out with this year is a parents' portal for RICAS, so parents can look at their child's RICAS scores and really dig deep into them. Superintendent Haskins and I are working on communication around that, just to get that out to families. So that is something else that our families have not had an opportunity to do before, and that they're gonna get to now. So hopefully partnering with, that allows us to partner with us a little bit more closely too. So then we're looking at, when our teachers have parent-teacher conferences, it's something they can both look at and talk about, and then parents can support that at home.
Thank you. And this will be my last one, I promise. And this would be more for the two of you. And Mr. Haskins, understanding that you're brand-new to us, but how do these results compare with the goals that have been set forth in the school improvement plans the previous year? Do you want to go?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are currently updating our school improvement plans to reflect all of the good work that is happening in our classrooms right now. The current school improvement plans that were submitted to the state emphasize the multi-tiered system of supports. How do we respond when students are not meeting expectations? That's a really important piece to include in a school improvement plan. What the school improvement plans that are currently submitted are lacking are all of the changes to learning that students are doing in their classrooms, the discourse around mathematics, the text-based discussions that students have with their peers, the writing that they're doing in response to their reading, and all of the changes that teachers are making in their classroom with the high-quality instructional materials that they're using. Those school improvement plans need to reflect that work. And so those are, the high-quality instructional materials are standards-based. These assessments are common core, state standards, world-class, high standards, as you know, different than the previous standards. So we'll see fewer students meeting expectations to those world-class standards. As, as a result, our work is to help support all learners to meet those high-class standards, so the school improvement plans, that's a long way of saying, the school improvement plans are currently being updated.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I know you touched on it, several other people touched on it, but it, it merits repeating. We've seen a lot of changes in this district, we've seen a lot of people who have left us, we have seen, you know, some challenging budget years, we have seen COVID, we have seen, you know, we've had a lot of challenges in this district, and I just want to commend all of our employees, Council 94, NEA, administration, that we continue to see these kind of results despite that. And, and it does take a village, and we know that everyone that's in this system, they care about these kids, and that they care that these kids are learning. So we have seen any number of challenges. I mean, I think I'm going on my 16th year now, and, and I just want to just repeat it. I know several of you have said it, but, you know, we, we, we understand the challenges, we understand that you all continue to, to rise to them.
Thank you for recognizing that. And maybe I'm just gonna suggest to our principals, when you are setting the stage for tomorrow, I think even bringing up what Mrs. Pollard said on behalf of the school committee would be really important, because our teachers and our administrators have done a lot with many less teachers. Our schedules have had to change significantly. Tiverton Middle School does not have PLC time, where a lot of this is worked on, on a regular basis. So, thank you. And I think we will use that tomorrow for, you know, just showing your recognition and validation, and yet still, we do have scores that are increasing. Thank you.
Sarah, all of this is about the neurotypical child. Where does special ed, I know they, the RICAS portal, do, do they have something that special ed students can look at for DLM?
Yes, so we just did RICAS today, but we have many students who have an IEP who take the RICAS. Most of our students, in fact, do take the RICAS. We did not, in this presentation, do any looking at different groups of students, but DLM, we can do, we still have to do a presentation, Ms. Puckett, on PSAT/SAT, on our science assessment, and we will include a DLM as well. So you'll be getting that whole picture.
Okay. So that's coming soon.
Yes, in the future.
Thank you.
We, I think we've exhausted our questions. So thank you, Ms. Cragor, thank you, Ms. Donnelly-Roch, Ms. Pott, Mr. Zatoli, thank you, Superintendent Haskins as well. On our agenda, we'll move to Learn 365 and Math Matters Rhode Island Municipal Learning Project. Mr. Haskins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Governor Dan McKee and the Rhode Island Department of Elementary and Secondary Education have offered $1.3 million in grants to municipalities in support of the Math Matters RI Initiative and Governor McKee's Learn 365 Initiative. This is the fourth round of funding for out-of-school learning. This funding is to support out-of-school time learning programs with an explicit focus on mathematics. All funds must be spent no later than June 15, 2026. Tiverton has been allocated $20,000 in funding, similar to other districts our size. The funding was substantially higher for the cities, but the, in the towns, were allocated funding based on their, the number of pupils served. This is about half of the funding that Tiverton received last year, and there is about half of the funding available this year, as there was compared to last year, for the state of Rhode Island. Our application will be submitted by the town of Tiverton. Director Andrade and I are working with Town Administrator Jones and Town Treasurer Charet to submit that application. I presented to our leadership team that our efforts might be best focused on algebra readiness. As you may know, ninth-grade algebra tends to be the course where we see the most course failure across the state and country. And anecdotally, the feedback has been that we have not had students prepared for algebra in ninth grade as well as we could. We offer one Algebra I course in the eighth grade in Tiverton, so we need to prepare students for the demands of algebra earlier. Our proposal will include after-school tutoring and algebra readiness at the middle school level to prepare students for ninth-grade algebra or to take algebra in the eighth grade. I got, I put a survey out to the faculty and staff to get some feedback, expressing to our community that we would like to focus on middle school mathematics. The feedback was overwhelmingly in support of targeting middle school algebra readiness. 95% of survey responders, respondents agreed that a focus on algebra readiness at the middle school level should be the purpose of this grant. And so we got some good feedback on that. We'll be looking to purchase multimodal algebra readiness programming, and we'll be looking for four teachers to teach an after-school program three days a week for a period of 24 weeks. And that application has gone to the municipal department, and we'll look forward to submitting that application by the due date of November 11.
Very good. Do you need any kind of action for us on this?
No, this, the, the Learn 365 grants filter through the municipalities. That's a new process, well, not new, it's the fourth round of funding, but we hadn't seen that before. Usually the grants run through the school departments, but these run through the municipalities, so there's no action required by the school committee this evening.
Good. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a couple of quick ones. How many students will be participating in this?
I'm unsure. Our planning was for 80 students. That is a lot of students to participate in after-school programming, but looking at the funding available, a maximum of 20 students per class, four teachers, we'd be looking at approximately 80 students. We will need to do a lot of outreach to students and families, so they can better understand the impact. If you do not take algebra in the eighth grade, you are not going to be on track to take calculus in high school. So it, it really benefits our students to take algebra in the eighth grade. And so we want to promote this program as an opportunity to do that.
So when would it, would you do school vacations, or have you thought, after school?
Our, our application is identifying three days a week after school.
After school?
But I think we're gonna be thinking flexibly about that, based on feedback and how we can get the greatest number of attendees.
I, I think, too, are you all set?
Yep, all set, thank you.
I think, too, one of the concerns is transportation with after-school. Do we still run the late bus?
We run one late bus a week at the middle school.
That's not gonna cut it for a three-day program.
We are hoping that parents will transport, and we will work with families to try to arrange carpooling.
Okay. I mean, it's important for kids to be able to participate.
Yeah, but if we don't have a bus, we don't have a bus.
No, I understand.
I mean, it's one of the many cuts we had to make, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, I understand, but, you know, being able to get them into the seats, it, it's the challenge.
And, and we will analyze that. If there are ways to boost participation by modifying the format, the days of the week, it being after-school versus vacation periods, then we will look at that.
Okay. Yeah, I can tell you, this, you know, I, I love that this is your area of focus. I remember as a parent struggling with this very topic, and it, it continued to be an issue through high school, because of the non, not readiness for algebra. So if you can get some of those kids at least ready to take that Algebra I in eighth grade and do well, so that by the time they get to high school, they're ready for the next steps, that, that's a wonderful goal. All right, anyone else? Okay. Last but not least, monthly financial report, Mr. Andrade.
You go last, because if you figure we're too tired to answer.
There you go.
I have questions.
By design.
So this is the...
So this is the usual report you guys receive on a monthly basis. This is the third month of the fiscal year, which is year-to-date September 2025. As we approach three months, or a quarter, if you would, there's nothing out of range. Everything is tracking within normal range for this point in the fiscal year. September spending reflects the start of regular payroll cycles, increased utility, and contractual service payment as school gets onboarded for one month of the school While no variances have emerged to date, we do remain attentive to several cost areas, including special ed education, out-of-district placements, as we know that's ever-evolving with either new students or different evaluations that are ongoing early in the year. This also would include any services, transportation, and any other matters that exist, which fluctuate significantly throughout the year. We continue to keep our eyes on. District continues to experience a positive increase in Medicaid reimbursements as well, with realized revenue now totaling $108,000 against initial budgetary offset of $65,000, so it is helpful to start sustaining a surplus in Medicaid reimbursements. So as we proceed into the second quarter, the focus again will be monitoring special ed obligations, transportation requirements, and unemployment insurance. As you guys mentioned, this has to do with the employee reductions we've been discussing this evening, so it all aligns with that. In your backup, you will see the usual budget versus actual report for 9:30, 25, and revenue by source. We spent $6.1 million to date, almost $6.2 million rounding, against a budget of almost $36 million. Any questions?
Does anyone have questions?
I have a question for Sarah. It's actually going to be a couple of questions. The Medicaid reimbursement, that is OT, PT, speech, APE, and when people do the PCA logs?
Correct. Social work and some reimbursement for augmentative communication devices, some assistive technology for students.
Okay. The PCA logs, is everyone that's supposed to be doing them, are they trained, they know what they're doing?
Yep, great question. We do train them. We actually, last year, had, some of our staff are here, had the woman from the Medicaid company come and train the staff. There's also on, like, ongoing webinars that they can watch if they have questions around that, and then they can contact my admin assistant for troubleshooting.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody that knows they have to do it is doing it, because that's a good revenue source.
Agreed. We make sure that happens?
Yeah, we had a historical year last year, so everything's working correctly to date in FY '25, even though we were in a deficit, it was, it helped that a little bit.
And billings are timely, and they're paying timely?
Yeah, everything's from the state level, so we're receiving it as we should once a month. Yep.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Yep. And as Sarah said, General, her assistant tracks all that analysis with the third-party vendor that we have to work with through the state of Rhode Island law, so.
Okay.
So there are some fees associated with this, but again, we don't have an option. We have to work with a vendor through that.
And everyone knows where they can go on the website to, if they have a question or?
Yeah, as far as I know, if they don't, again, they contact Jenna to find that out, and they also are teacher assistants who have been here for a little bit, might have a little bit more knowledge, so they work together, too, with other teacher assistants in their building. Yeah, so as far as I know.
Okay, thank you.
PCA?
Personal Care Assistant.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Just a couple of quick observations. On the insurance premiums, right, we're 25% through the year, and both the health, life, and dental, we are above 25% in spending. Is that a cause for concern?
No, that has to do with entering payroll deductions into our accounting system.
Timing?
Timing of them, yeah. So, as you know, our accounting team, which is Skeleton Crew, is focusing on FY '25, so we're a little behind on entering payroll deductions into our accounting system. We only have one.
Okay, so it's not that we have under-budgeted?
No, we just have one person that does accounting entries, so she's trying to finalize FY '25, and that does reflect being a little behind on payroll deductions.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
I see a number of, I'm not going to call it discretionary categories, because I know every dime we spend is important in furtherance of education, but there are a number of categories that are above, yeah, 25%, that would, could be sadly controlled by freezes if spending got to be too high. We have budgets for a reason. We know things are very tight. We really don't have the flexibility to be going over. You know, as an example, and some of this may be timing-related as well, right? Grounds maintenance, you're at 46%. Well, obviously, we're heading into the winter season, so I would expect there'd be less grounds maintenance over the next couple of months. But, you know, in some cases, you're at 50% for maintenance and repair, for fixtures. There's just a few of them that are a little bit concerning, and I'll just, you know, ask you to please keep a close eye on those items and make sure that any spending that is happening is absolutely necessary, because this is a very tight budget.
Agreed, yeah, we're always keeping an eye on everything, but most of the maintenance and repairs are high because those are things we do before school starts.
Okay.
So that's normal cadence. Same thing with the ground maintenance. The big purchase out of that is all the line paint we need for the full year of athletics, so football, field hockey, baseball, softball, et cetera. That's a $16,000 payment.
Okay.
Yeah, out of 30, so that's more than half, you know.
So you don't have any concerns?
Not in that area right now.
Or in any of the areas that you actually have to buy things?
Nope. Like I said, the only concern I have right now is just unemployment insurance is a little high, but again, that was, that's the case when.
It's a direct function of layoffs.
Yeah, that has an employee reduction case, so just keeping an eye on that. We did appeal some, but again, the problem is, you have to, the way the State Department of Labor works, you have to pay the invoice, then appeal, so we could get some of those funds back, but unfortunately, you still have to pay the bill before. But that would be the only concern I have right now, and again, we just have a fluctuation of some incoming students that we're, you know, doing the basic, you know, basic evaluations of, so we're keeping a close eye on that as well.
Absolutely. It's been the Achilles for the last year or so.
Yep.
Okay. Everyone else all set? Thank you, Mr. Andrade.
You're welcome.
That takes us to the end of the regular agenda. Just as a reminder to everyone, our next meeting is November 12. It is the only scheduled meeting we have for November.
I do want to say, I know the chair is going to be absent, so it will be at my discretion, and right now, I do not plan on calling that meeting unless there is an emergent or urgent or, you know, some, something that you guys really need us to come together on, because the week of Thanksgiving is there, the week of, you know, Veterans Day is a holiday, so right now, I am not inclined to call that meeting unless you, Brandon, Sarah, Chris, and your team, if you need us to approve something, certainly reach out to me and let me, let me know, but for now, I am not planning on calling that meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Steph.
You're welcome. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to move into executive session under Rhode Island General Law 4246582, negotiations update for Council 94, and Rhode Island General Law 4246582, litigation update for Newport County Special Ed.
So moved.
Have a second? Second? And?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. We're in executive session.